Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting of the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners to order. Stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner McConnell. Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Hyattman. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Greitner.
Here.
Chairman Bohm.
Here. Item three, are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda this evening?
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as presented. Support.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five, minutes of previous meetings, items A through C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and file the minutes of 11:21:19 Joint Board of Commissioners and Library Board of Trustees meeting, the O-11620 Commission meeting, and the O-2620 Standing Committee meetings. Support.
Discussion on any of these, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. No proclamations. Consent agenda, items A through I.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve items 7A through 7I on the consent agenda.
Support.
Any discussion on any of these? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item eight, reports of standing and special committees. Commissioner Greitner.
I've got a couple of things that I just wanted to touch on. One is the county parks down in the south end of the county. That is moving forward, we've talked about it before, so I won't belabor the point, but 28 miles to the closest county park from my house, so getting one down there, I think it's going to serve the citizens down that way very well. Also, I wanted to address the proclamation, or the resolution rather, that we approved at the last meeting. There was some controversy as to why we pulled it off of the agenda about five or six weeks ago. And the reason we pulled that off of the agenda is not everybody was comfortable with the wording, they didn't quite understand it. And I will tell you personally when it came off. I took it and I studied what did it mean. I looked at things like the definition of what is a sanctuary county. I talked to our Corporation Council, I talked to other attorneys looking for a definition of that. I went online, I talked to our prosecutor, talked to the Sheriff's Department, and anybody else that I could find. I talked to commissioners in other areas of the state of Michigan, trying to get a feel for it. And when it was all said and done, we put it back on the agenda and it passed 6 to 0. One member was not here at the time, I think Howard was missing that day, so I just wanted to...
You met with Gary too, we met with Commissioner Eisen. And I know Casey, I don't know if Casey's in attendance.
Yep, I met with Casey, yep.
Yeah, we met with some of them, so, okay. All right.
That's all I have, sir.
Yeah, okay. David.
I'm good.
Duke?
Yes, sir.
Georgia. I'm going to take a pass too. So, we're going to go into citizens wishing to address the board. If you get a chance, you can go right up there. Kristen Lyons, 6262 Marine City Highway, China, Michigan. The resolution.
My name's Kristen Lyons, I live in Chinatownship. I've lived there for over 20 years. I'd like to thank you, our county commissioners, for your service and your commitment to sustaining our community as a great place to live, work, and play. Your job is difficult and often thankless, and I truly appreciate each of you. I object to the Second Amendment Resolution 2003 for several reasons. First, it was unnecessary, as both our state and federal constitution are strong and whole already. Second, this resolution elevates one amendment, and not even the whole thing, above all the others, which begins to wade into constitutional law. Third, it is out of scope for this governing body and out of character for our community. It creates a wasteful distraction, and it's not representative, it's not beneficial. The Second Amendment isn't being threatened in St. Clair County, or at least no more so than any other amendment to the Constitution. Lively public debate, discussion, research, compromise, and even legislation do not create a threat to our Constitution. In fact, civic and congressional engagement uphold our democratic ideals, they help us arrive at better decisions, and they maintain accountability. The resolution is saying that laws can't change, that they can't be interpreted in the courts, or even worse, that if they do, we will not uphold them in St. Clair County. We can't let our very valuable county commissioners get distracted from their work by individuals or special interest groups who feel a little panicky. You have enough to manage already. What does this message send to, that this resolution sends, to our thriving, dynamic, beautiful, growth-minded community? What does it say about us to our region? Are we trying to attract and retain bright young people? Are we inclusive of diversity thought and opinion? Please consider revoking Resolution 2003.
Next up, Kristen Bass, 9275 Putty Gut Road, Casco, Michigan, women and families reducing violence.
Guys, they get Bloomberg over here. So, I'm Kristi, Christina Bass, I'm from Casco, Michigan. I'm here tonight with my family, my husband, my daughters. I wasn't going to speak, but at the last minute kind of chose to. I typically speak in a classroom. I am a firearms instructor. I'm also a CPL holder, I'm part of Michigan Open Carry. I firmly believe that firearms reduce violence. They are not the cause of violence. I, in the past, have been a victim of violence, and I have had an occasion where my daughter was almost taken from me. And that changed my life, and I decided at that point, I was going to try to help other people become more empowered and more safe. And I am not going to stand here and speak for a long time, but I am asking you, make this promise to us, we know that this isn't legally binding, we know that it's not going to change a whole lot, but this tells us that you hear us. This tells us that we mean something. Please, put this resolution through. That's it.
Michael John Martin, 918 Hill Road, Wales Township, Second Amendment.
Howdy do you, my name's Mike Martin, I live in Wales, kind of out in the country a little bit. I asked the police certain times, how fast can you get to me if I call 911? The response was 15 to 20 minutes. Well, as everybody knows, a lot can happen in that timeframe. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution to make us a sanctuary county. And part of the reason I'm looking forward to say this is, there's too much of this going on in other states. We see the same things cropping up in our state about the red flag laws, where somebody can say, your neighbor doesn't like you, or doesn't care for you, or is afraid of you, you might have firearms, you might hurt them. I don't think a law like that, that can circumvent due process, should be allowed to be passed. But I think by making this a sanctuary county, it adds a little help to the Constitution. Sure, the Constitution, we're only looking at one of the Bill of Rights amendments, but certainly after you've been disarmed, the next thing that'll happen is they'll go after other ones. They've already been going after free speech. It's very hard to say anything in what you're thinking, and you can get in a lot of trouble if you say the wrong thing, and we all know about that. I'm just urging you folks and everybody here that, we really need this. The state needs to stand united against any of these new laws that other people are trying to pass to circumvent the supreme law of the land. Thank you for letting me speak.
Kathy Weiss, 3540 Melton Road, Fort Grashut, Michigan.
Good evening. I'm here kind of representing all the hunters. My father died just recently, and he was from World War II. We all hunt, we all break down each generation, and it would be my father's great-granddaughter that is now hunting. We've always been taught gun safety in this time, we've always hunted. I mean, have you ever had venison stew? Have you ever had scroal? I mean, you guys just don't realize. And a lot of the poor people, they can't afford to go out and, you know, buy the meat all the time. And if they can go out in their backyard and shoot something that they can put on the table, hey, that's great. Also, I am very leery of any place you can go that they hold your guns. Like Birchwood Mall, guns aren't allowed. That bothers me, it's right a sign on the door as you walk in. That bothers me because of all the shootings everywhere, and they've chosen malls because there's a lot of people there. In any large places like this, my dad was a veteran, my brother was a veteran, my son is a veteran. My son gets very anxious when there's a lot of people around, and that's his first thing on his mind, was I need to protect my family. And this is one of the reasons. There's too much, and I watch the news constantly because I'm retired, so there's too much going on in this world, there's pedophilia. I mean, I just would die if anything happened to my grandchildren. And I know it would bother any of you if anything happened to your grandchild. That makes us, as grandparents and mothers, very afraid. And if you open carry, it's been proven that, hey, they don't bug you if you've got a gun, it's a oh! You know, you have a gun, we're, you know, like in that church shooting, they got him. The guy stood up and shot him. Unfortunately, there were still two killed, but just think of the number of people that would have been killed. Thank you very much.
Mike Goforth, 710 Pug Road, St. Clair, Michigan.
Hello. I just wanted to remind the commissioners of the founders' original intent. Certainly, the founders would not have even thought about taking individual guns away. However, that's not what the Second Amendment's about. Second Amendment is about the states, when they were trying to bind themselves together, being suspicious of a central government and a standing army because of what King George did. So, they wanted to retain their militias. That's why the first line is a well-regulated militia. So, that's what I got. Thank you.
Christine Danner, 2873 Oakwood Drive, Port Huron.
I have to say, Kirsten Lyons expressed my feelings about it completely. I am opposed to the resolution, I don't think it's necessary, considering that America has the second highest rate of gun ownership in the world, 120 weapons per 100 people population. I don't think the Second Amendment is in any danger at all. I think it's sending a very bad message to the rest of the world about what St. Clair County is about. And I wanted the commission to realize that not everybody in this county is on board with that resolution. Thank you.
Remember Virginia?
You should be ashamed of yourselves. Your continued lack of transparency is a disgrace to your constituents in this entire county. Your rhetoric has continued to change on a whim to benefit your good old boy network. Folks, these commissioners think we're stupid. After our immense amount of political pressure, they tried to think of cunning ways for us to stop. After their last commission, at their last commission committee meeting, they passed a worthless document in a committee that the media heralded as a Second Amendment resolution. But the real kicker is this, these commissioners think that we are dumb enough to think that the resolution only needs to be voted in committee. That is not the case. In actuality, it also has to be voted in at a full board meeting. Does anyone see it on the agenda here tonight? It isn't, because they want any excuse to kill any resolution or act that is action that is pro-Second Amendment when the time comes. Either way, this half-ass reaction was caused by me, a 19-year-old kid, and my fellow patriots standing right over there. If just our actions cause you to change course, who knows what will happen when Michael Bloomberg comes to this state with $10 million in his pocket? Will you betray your constituents and exchange 30 pieces of silver for our gun rights like Judas did to Jesus thousands of years ago? Us gun owners are told that we cannot expand gun rights in Washington or Lansing because of Democrats. While we have a supermajority of Republicans on this board, and we cannot get you to act whatsoever, instead, we have Chairman Bohm banning gun possession on county property for everyone but his committee members? Well, you know what? Thank God our state legislator thought about county tyrants like you, and banned you from doing such a thing in 1990. You did it anyways, but either way, it's worthless. Right now, you all sound, talk, and act like a board of Democrats with an R by their name, just so that you can collect a government paycheck, health care and pension that we pay for? We, the people of St. Clair County, are giving you Republicans a name only, one last chance to get your act together before we run organized opposition against each and every one of We have a list of action items that we demand that you get done. It begins with a passing of a new sanctuary resolution already passed in 16 counties for and by the people. Secondly, it begins with the repeal of the county dangerous weapons policy, just in case Governor Whitmer gets crazy in 2020. And thirdly, it's the reopening of the county range and the allocation of funding to expand it. The remainder will be listed by my fellow patriots here tonight. These demands are incredibly reasonable, the majority of which can be completed here tonight, it would not cost this county a single dollar. And in closing, I will honor the traditions and valiant sacrifice of our founding fathers. On December 14, 1775, after the destruction of Southern loyalist opposition in Norfolk, Virginia, Benjamin Franklin was questioned about the action of the militias that provided the valiant victory. Franklin's response was simple and poetic. Rebellion to tyrants is obedience to God. You decide what happens here tonight. Your actions speak louder than words, open promises, and your previous sworn oath. If you choose wrongly, we will see you on the political battlefield.
Joshua Colts, 506 Broadway, Marine City.
Good evening, everybody. I will do my best to make this statement short and to the point. My name is Joshua Colts, I live with my wife in Marine City. This evening, I've come here to share my opinion on why it is imperative that the Board of Commissioners revisit the vote to make St. Clair County a Second Amendment Sanctuary County. With multiple states now pushing for more strict gun control, I fear that those in positions of power here in Michigan will now be emboldened to attempt the same types of legislation and restrictions here in Michigan. While there is currently no imminent danger to our rights as of this moment, I feel that it is imperative that we make a clear and concise statement, that attempts to take away citizens' rights will not succeed here in St. Clair County. By removing the sanctuary wording from the adopted resolution, the teeth of said resolution have been removed, making it less credible, sorry, making it less credible to those who would seek guns, the tools that ensure that citizenry has final say over what the government says and does be removed from our society. It is also shameful, I believe, that the state of Michigan will stand with citizens' desires to consume marijuana despite its illegality at the federal level, and we can't even get a guarantee at a more local level to ensure the protection of a constitutionally guaranteed right to bear arms.
That's right. That's right. We want to learn all this stuff tonight.
Therefore, I would like to see the adopted resolution be revisited by the Board of Commissioners and request that the teeth be added back in.
Yes.
I would like to conclude, I would like to conclude with a quote and a final statement. Posterity, you will never know how much it costs the present generation to preserve your freedom. I hope that you will make good use of it. If you do not, I shall repent in heaven that I ever took half the pains to preserve it. John Adams wrote that to his wife back in April of 26, 1777, in the midst of the American Revolutionary War. This quote was addressed to all of us, all of us. Sorry, lost my spot. This was addressed to all of us by using the word posterity. That is, all of us. You have a choice now to decide which side of the line you wish to be on. Sorry. Will you stand in favor of ensuring freedom for yourself and your posterity, or will you give up the opportunity to show the rest of the state of Michigan that tyranny will not be abided here in St. Clair County? I came here today to make this statement to the board, not so much for myself, as much as for my children and for my grandchildren. I pray that the next generation will be granted as much freedom as I have enjoyed, and I also implore the Board of Commissioners to stand more firmly on the side of freedom. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and God bless the United States of America.
Ian Lawson, 624 South Brady.
My fellow Americans and commissioners, in Washington's first annual address, he said, "A free people ought not only to be armed, but to be disciplined." It is that discipline, not just of arms or of action, but also of mind that brings us here today. In that light, I will continue with the following gun vote demands. You commissioners decree that the sheriff must deputize every non-felon of the county to protect their rights in the event of a federal, state, or other legislatures pass anti-two-way laws that infringe on citizens' rights and seek to either confiscate or restrict firearms, restrict, ban the assembling or training of citizens, and/or seek to limit the exercise of any element of the Constitution, or infringe on any protected right, or threaten to pull county funding. Five, decree that any county judge who violates the Second Amendment, or any other amendment of the US or state Constitution for that matter, have their county courtroom defunded, and that that judge be summarily replaced by the people, and if they do not, reverse the decision. Lights out. If any school within the county reprimands a student because they were practicing their right to free speech in any legal matter on any issue, particularly regarding the Second Amendment, the county will revoke funding until the punishment is reversed and erased from the record. Upon reflection, some here may privately say unto themselves that, in our modern era, the Second Amendment has been dulled by the societal necessity for safety. And to you, I would like to point ourselves to our friend across the pond, William Pitt, the younger, in a speech to the House of Commons in 1783, said, "Necessity is the plea for every infringement of human freedom. It is the argument of tyrants and the creed of slaves." Necessity is what has led to all manner of infringement for all manner of rights, from pointing to scary black rifles and saying, no one needs one of those, all for necessary safety, of course. As a culture, we specialized in everything, and by doing so, certain efficiencies were gained. From having plumbers and surgeons, or how we set up fast food, everyone has their niche, and it works. But what we simply can't do is specialize the personal responsibility for ourselves and our families. That can never be outsourced. That burden lies with each to maintain a functional knowledge, a personal involvement in both defending his own rights and teaching the ideals of our great experiment to themselves and their family. That it is God who grants rights, and it is the states and the commissioners' privilege to protect them.
Tim Keller, 824 Lakeview Avenue.
My name is Tim Keller, Chairman Bohm, members of the board. The Second Amendment is America's great equalizer because it levels the playing field. Each of us is constitutionally recognized as having the right to keep and bear arms. Most of world history stands in direct opposition to America's great equalization of the people. Kings, pharaohs, shoguns, overlords of all types and titles maintain control by surrounding themselves with armed men, knights, samurai, armed nobility, the weaponized enforcers of control over disarmed populations. America's founders intentionally established a new type of government that operates in full knowledge that the people are armed with the power to defend freedom against tyranny. The same generation who used their own weapons to fight against their government's tyranny recognized the right of the people to own and carry weapons for the express purpose of defending freedom against tyranny. It's not about hunting, it's about freedom. At the opposite end of the political spectrum, we observe whole populations subservient to tyrannical government. Such governments as exist now in China and North Korea do not permit non-government-affiliated persons to own or carry firearms. During World War II, the French suffered because they had fallen for the lie that gun control equals safety. During the '30s, the French government tried to quiet public unrest by ordering every citizen to register their firearms. When German forces seized power in France, the Third Reich used the French Firearms Registry as a checklist. Using that list, they hunted down and executed everyone who did not surrender their firearms to the police. The French Resistance was so oppressed to obtain firearms to assist the Allies as they liberated France from tyranny. Gun control schemes always come to one end, control of the disarmed many by the weaponized few in power. That's not equality, that's the very essence of tyranny. Choose freedom, not tyranny. Don't put your head in the sand and pretend there aren't politicians eager to control a disarmed America. Instead, stand on the founders' principle that recognizes we are all equalized under the Second Amendment's guarantee that each of us has the right to equip ourselves to defend freedom against those who seek unlimited control. Stand for freedom while we still have the opportunity. Declare St. Clair County a Second Amendment sanctuary, not just by committee vote, but in regular full session. Thank you.
I can't make the first name out, but Webb's the last name, 7036 Maldrum Ira, Michigan.
Thank you. Commissioners, it is historically evident that at the time of the founding fathers, the concept of the militia was that of the average citizen equipped with the the concept of the militia was that of the average citizen equipped with the effective fighting implement of the day, ready at all times to come to the defense of his family and his home. So we're not just talking about half of this amendment, we're talking about the entirety of the amendment, despite what was said earlier. This organization, while needing to be well-regulated, did not demand that it was completely controlled by government bodies, but at least facilitated and encouraged as part of the mutual benefit. While our time is vastly different from the time of the founding fathers, the principle is a timeless one. A free people are responsible for their own self-determination, and in the event of needing to mount a defense from enemies, either foreign or domestic, the citizens are obligated to do so. While the role of both federal and state governments are to defend externally, the check and balance of a trained and equipped citizen militia at the lowest government control possible is a powerful and needed check to ensure that tyranny can never fully take hold of the American republic. The American experiment has only lasted and survived as long because of a strong balance of a citizenry who cannot be disarmed. I, myself, did not grow up in the United States. I am born to an American and a Canadian and grew up in Canada, just a few hours from here. In Canada, the rights that the citizens enjoy are simply dictates from the government that they allow them to enjoy, but at any moment can be taken away. Currently, it is possible in Canada for the government to arbitrarily send people to prison for speech that the government deems offensive. That is not freedom, that is living under benevolent overlords who guise themselves as holding to democratic values. The problem that Canada has is the lack of a check and a balance to power. That is why we, as free patriotic Americans, hold the Second Amendment so dearly, because without it, all of the other amendments, because when we speak of the Second Amendment, we're talking of all the amendments, but without the Second, none of them would remain. So we have a couple, a few more points, a few more points. First of all, we would demand that a county ordinance or resolution that decriminalizes the carrying of firearms in a gun-free zone, if not, the Commissioners would revoke the funding from the prosecutor's office. Also, as the sheriff, as the highest-ranked law officer in the county, that he would demand that the state handgun registration be deemed illegal. Finally, that the county is to create a county citizens' militia in order to protect the rights of the people from all enemies, foreign and domestic. This would include a countywide muster of willing and able-bodied citizens. This also includes an allocation of funding for CPL classes, firearm safety, hunter training safety in schools, and as well for funding for projects such as Project Appleseed that encourage firearm safety and marksmanship. I would like to close with the words of the well-known patriot, Patrick Henry. Why stand here idle? What is it that gentlemen wish? What would they have? Is life so dear, or peace so sweet, as to be purchased at the price of change in slavery? Forbid it, Almighty God. I know what course others may take, but as for me, give me liberty or give me death.
Okay, we're going to move into the new business items if it seems like we go through these fairly quick. They were actually in committee, we had discussed them previously, then we move them onto the full board. So, item eleven A, we've got the approval of county dispersments for January two thousand twenty.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the county dispersments for January twenty twenty in the amount of twenty million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes.
Item B, the contract approval request.
At this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Amendment One to the Agreement for IT Services with Oakland County for the G2G credit card payment system.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item C, the contract approval request.
This time, I move to approve the maintenance agreement with Applied Imaging Lowry Corporation for copy machines for a term of March first, two thousand twenty, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, in an estimated amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item D, the contract approval request.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to move to approve the contract with Blue Otter Safe Horizons for the two thousand, for the two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in the amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item E, another contract approval request.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I move to approve the contract with Lake Shore Legal Aid for two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in the amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-six thousand, six hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item F, the contract approval request.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Life Skills Centers Incorporated for two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in amount not to exceed forty thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Sorry, I was talking to Jill. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item G, contract approval request.
This time, I'd like to move to approve the contract extensions with Circe Dynex Horizon for software maintenance for the library in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars for a term of March first, two thousand twenty, through February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item H, the contract approval request.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the contract with Public Guardian for the two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in the amount not to exceed sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item I, contract approval request.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the contract with Sanborn Gresham Memorial Home for the two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in the amount not to exceed seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item J, the contract approval request.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with the Visiting Nursing Association for the two thousand twenty Commission on Aging Services in an amount not to exceed five hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Support.
Thank you.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item K, the two thousand twenty Marine Safety Program Grant.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty, Marine Safety Program Application in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars.
Support.
We can do this on a, this is a grant. Just a grant, okay. Discussion. Bill.
Yeah, I just want to say that this number is up just a little bit over last year's. It's probably going to be needed with the high water that we have coming, not only in, along the shorelines, but in the southern part where you have homes on canals going down the Black River. It's going to be extremely important that we have the sheriff out there to kind of keep an eye on those wakes and protect people's property, so I was glad to see that grant was up just a little bit higher this year. Thank you.
Okay. Any more? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item L, two thousand twenty Michigan Mental Health Court Grant.
This time, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty Mental Health Court Grant Program additional award in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Item N.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum for the two thousand nineteen agreement, asphalt trucks increasing to the not-to-exceed amount by forty-eight thousand, five hundred, and the addendum for the two thousand twenty agreement with the asphalt trucks decreasing the not-to-exceed amount by forty-eight thousand, five hundred.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion. Actually, just a little kind of sidebar, but we had met with, what was there, about forty people there yesterday, forty, fifty people out at the landfill?
I'd say forty or fifty.
Yeah, GT Biomass kind of hosted the program to talk to the, a lot of the townships and stuff. A lot of the township supervisors, you know, have actually seen the landfill and all the things that we're doing out there. Some of the newer individuals, I thought they found it quite interesting with all the stuff that we've been doing, the technologies and that thing that we built, so. Roll call.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item N.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to award a contract for St. Clair River Shoreline Armoring at the Blue Otter River Walk to Malcolm Marine in the amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item O, the Goodells County Park Event Marquee Design Contract.
This time, I move to award a contract for design services for a Goodells County Park Event Marquee to PM Blau Incorporated in an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. Item P, the two thousand twenty Medical Marijuana Operation Oversight Grant Agreement.
This time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty Medical Marijuana Operation Oversight Grant Agreement in the amount of forty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Q, Playground Designs Professional Services Contract.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to award a contract for Playground Designs to PL Blau Inc. in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Greathop.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Chairman Bohm.
Yes. R, the Proposed Landfill Disposal Fee Schedule Revisions.
At R?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, then, at this time, I move to adopt the Proposed Landfill Disposal Fee Schedule effective October one, two thousand twenty.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item S, the Region Ten Substance Use Disorder Advisory Board Appointment.
This time, I move to appoint Bobby Umbright to the St. Clair County Region Ten Prepaid Inpatient Health Plan Substance Use Disorder Advisory Board as the St. Clair County Representative for a two-year term expiring March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item T, the Sheriff's Department Manning Table Request.
Mr. Chair, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request to restructure the Marine Division Coordinator position to Sergeant in the Sheriff Department Manning Table.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Item U.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty County Veteran Service Fund Grant Application in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Support.
Discussion. Application, all in favor?
Aye.
Item twelve, the Administrator's Report.
As you'll recall, you approved earlier the refunding of our debt on our Intervention Center. We got the final pricing on those bonds today, and the savings is nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It came in better than the initial estimates. We actually moved our pricing up a week because of our current market lows. The interest rate, the average coupon rate, was one point nine percent. In conjunction with that, we had to have an additional bond rating call with Standard and Poor's, and they did reaffirm our bond rating of a double-A with a stable outlook, so that was also good news. Administration received notification from the Government Finance Officers Association that our two thousand eighteen financial statements did receive the GFPA Award once again, so congratulations to Danielle and her staff. And lastly, our Public Defender's Office is getting very close to being staffed, and our physical office space should be functional by mid-March. Furniture is going to be installed next week, and then we have some IT installations that have to happen, but we should have staff coming onboard about the middle of March,